This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour has arrived for us to open up our regular scheduled budget session meeting. And we are elated this evening to have a special guest to give us our invocation for our meeting. I'm going to ask if Board Member Mr. Calhoun, if he would introduce our guest for us on this evening.
Thank you, Reverend Elliott. I'd like to introduce a good friend of mine from our church, St. Paul's Episcopal Church in Surrey, Virginia, Mr. Chip Sharkey, if you'll provide the invocation for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you, Tim, Mr. Chairman, all supervisors for this honor and privilege. Now let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today in this virtual meeting. Thank you for the means to be able to continue with the life and work of our county during this difficult time. Thank you for your many blessings, for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work in this community and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. During the time of this COVID-19 pandemic, we pray for all people throughout the world, in our country, our Commonwealth, and particularly this county of Surrey. Please protect all people from sickness, heal those who may be ill, bless the souls of those who have passed on to be with you in glory, and bless and comfort their loved ones. Bless and protect all our law enforcement, first responders, doctors, nurses, caregivers, and essential workers. We thank you for their dedication, kindness, care, and love for their fellow humankind. We pray that you send down upon all those who hold office in this county of Surrey and particularly this Board of Supervisors, the spirit of wisdom, justice, and charity. We ask that you grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of the welfare and true needs of all of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give them assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved county of Surrey. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Elliott, please unmute your line. Thank you, Mr. Sharkey, for our invocation. And at this time, we do call our meeting open for the business of Surrey County. We do call for a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. During our past virtual meetings, we all did our Pledge of Allegiance at the same time, and we got a lot of feedback. So we just want to change that a little bit tonight. And I'm going to ask if Board Member Ms. Little, if she would give us our Pledge of Allegiance at this time. Were you able to hear me, Ms. Little? Trying to see if she's on pause.
Yes. Her lines, she's muted at this point.
Okay. Mr. Drury, would you lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible and liberty.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Board members, you have before you the agenda for our meeting on this evening. You've had an opportunity to look at our agenda. Could we get a roll call on the acceptance of the agenda for our business meeting on tonight? Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. I apologize for my voice. Roll call vote, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you all. We are now in our second work session of budget discussion. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over into the hands of our acting county administrator so we can proceed with this matter at hand. Ms. Rollins?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Elliott, Vice Chairman Drury, members of the Board of Supervisors, and to all the citizens who are attending virtually. Good evening to you all. As Mr. Elliott alluded to, we are at our third session in terms of deliberating the budget for fiscal year 2021. I advised the board and also advising the public that the information as it pertains to tonight was posted on the agenda. And I'm advising that the budget document that was posted for you all's review and edification and for the purpose of the citizens as well is a budget document that presents a concerted effort to provide a financial plan along with the support of staff and management. We wanted to provide a financial document that was consistent with the standards of the Government Finance Office Association. So I do hope that you find the material useful to yourselves and also to the public in terms of explanations as far as what went into the addition of preparing a budget for the county for fiscal year 2021. So we do understand that the budget, of course, was prepared in the midst of COVID-19. And there was a lot of changes that we had to do. But I believe that was able to prepare a budget per the recommendation of you, the Board of Supervisors, in concert with some of the comments that you have received from citizens as well as management recognizing the need to go back and make some adjustments to make sure that we are doing a budget that is commensurate with the current economy that we are in. So you do have also a presentation that was prepared for this evening. It's relatively quick. If I can get it on my screen here. Okay. Okay. So the, again, the budget development. I apologize, one second, you all. I need to see if I can move it over. It's hiding from me. Hi. One second. Okay. For some reason tonight, it's not letting me see. Okay. I apologize for that. It looks like it's on my screen, it's cut off a little bit. So I'm just trying to make an adjustment. Just give me one second. Thank you for your patience. Okay. All righty then. I'm using two devices, but it's all good. Okay. Thank you again, you all. So again, the fiscal year 2021 budget development. As you all know, that the, on April the 23rd, the budget was presented to the board and to the public at a work session, again, that we held on April the 23rd. When we prepared the budget initially, I had indicated to you all that we were facing a shortfall between revenue and expenditures over $1 million. We went through a series of cuts, and we were able to reduce that shortfall to about $853,000. But at particular time, we recognized that we needed some additional revenue in order to close that gap. As I stated again, that we received feedback on the 23rd. And again, we recognized that there was a need to make some adjustments, that we needed to go back to the drawing board and to make several adjustments to reduce the budget, to cut out $852,000, which would have been revenue that would have been created by a three cents tax rate increase. So again, going back after the work session, we made several cuts. And those cuts are going to be identified this evening in order to that you all know exactly what was done to bring a balanced budget to the board on this evening. Okay. The next slide shows the revised budget without the increase in the real estate tax rate. It shows here what the adopted budget was for fiscal year 1920. It shows what the budget was initially proposed at the 74 cents. It shows the proposed budget at the 71 cents. And it shows the change from the initially proposed budget. And I'm just going to point you all to the bottom line where it says total all funds. You can see here where the change resulted in the reduction of the $854,837 from the budget that was proposed at the 74 cents. The general fund budget at the very top, you can see that the proposed amount would be $28,369,42. And that represents a decrease of $420,000 over the current fiscal year 1920 budget. And a lot of that reduction, Board members, in terms of the general fund, is related to a reduction in the transfers out to other agencies, like social services and the schools, and other transfers out. It also represents a reduction of several other areas in the budget relating to, for example, the contingency fund that was lowered. And other reductions will be shown to you in the actual budget document itself. The proposed budget, including the general fund and including all the other funds that you see here, listen on the chart, will total $57,761,149. And you can see that the majority of the increase is associated with the capital improvement plan. And the capital improvement plan is an amount of $8,165,016. Majority of the amount for the CIP represents two projects in public safety that total nearly $5.6 million. The other CIP commitment is primarily associated with the broadband technology initiative, and that amount is in the budget at $1.7 million. And there are several details on the CIP that will be shared with the board and another in the actual budget document. In terms of closing the gap, again, there were some additional revenue adjustments that we still felt we needed to make. After we went through the budget cuts to try to get to the $852,000, we were short about $208,000, I believe. There was a recommendation that was brought to your attention at the last meeting as far as an option to diversify the county's revenue. And that was to create a, excuse me, to implement a 6% meals taxes. And that would give us an estimated revenue of about $80,000. There was other recommendations brought to you for some other fee adjustments. If you recall, it was the machinery and tools tax. It was a slight increase in our personal property tax for about a quarter. There was another proposal put at the table for you to consider if you wanted to increase the amount of our decal fee by $5. So there were several things that were put on the table in terms of option number one at that particular time to get to the $852,000 reduction that we need to balance the budget. But in terms of the actual revenue and what has been brought to you this evening for your consideration in order to get additional revenue to help balance our budget, these three things have been identified. Again, $80,000 for the meals taxes, $28,000 for insurance reimbursements for ambulance billing fees, no impact to patients, that's insurance reimbursements again. And although not a favorite item to use when balancing a budget, but we are requesting a use of $100,000 in our fund balance to replace unwarranted revenue that was previously directed to fund maintenance capital projects. So again, that is a use of our fund balance. Now, in terms of just a little bit more about fund balance, a lot of times we ask the question regarding fund balance. And of course, there's two major reasons why we use fund balance. One of those reasons, you know, all the emergencies such as this, when we're under a pandemic, some localities are finding that they may have to use their fund balance. And that's why it's important at the particular time to maintain a cushion to make sure that we offset against any recessionary occurrences that may happen. The other use of fund balance that you see a lot in local government is to be able to reserve that for potential economic development opportunities that may have, that may come about. This particular slide shows the spending cuts. There were some positions that were recommended in the initial budget. All of these positions have been eliminated in the new revised budget, starting with the human resources manager, the special assistant to the county administrator, freezing the finance director position in the assuming year's budget by replacing that, of course, with contractual services because we have to have financial director services. And of course, there's a one vacant position that we have in our budget in our treasurer's office. And rather than filling that position at the beginning of July, there's a proposal to fill that position in December or one half of the fiscal year. Now, in terms of the positions that requested, I just want to share with the board that these positions requested were not requested in the vacuum, although that we do recognize the need to make these reductions in the new year. The human resources manager, of course, you all know, is an important position for our county. Human resources that we know today is not the same as human resources we knew years ago. And for the protection of the county, it is important that sometime revisit that and definitely get that position in the county. I do want to share also the special assistant to the county administrator. As you know, in the current year, there was two positions. We had a county administrator and an assistant county administrator. The county, the proposed budget back on the 16th and the 23rd showed elimination of the assistant county administrator position. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that this was not a third position. This was eliminating the assistant county administrator's position and replacing it with a lower grade position to help feel the needs of county administration. But at the same time, in the revised budget, this position as well has been eliminated. Okay? We had also indicated that there were several part-time positions that we had looked at initially. The revised budget only makes some minor adjustments to part-time. And they are shown here. And these were the ones that we felt that we could safely do as far as part timing without greatly impacting the services that we are providing to the county and to the citizens. The most prominent reduction you see here is the last item. This says the part-time sanitation worker is $38,301. And this basically reduces the average hourly, excuse me, the average weekly hours from 29 to about 25 hours a week. And this would involve closing our sites either one hour later and/or opening one hour later. And those details can be worked out. But again, this was a budget reduction strategy, and that would save the county about $38,000. And again, we know that our sites are operational seven days a week. And we still hope that that would definitely be able to still provide the operational services and would have minimal impact to the county by this budget reduction strategy. As I mentioned earlier, the budget is reduced by transfers out. The schools, we're recommending an additional $150,000 reduction from the initial amount that was approved for the transfer to the schools and transfers to the comprehensive services act fund. Although risky, we're reducing that by $35,000 because that fund is largely contingent upon the services that are provided to the students who may need those services. So often, as we will in this particular fiscal year, for an example, may have to come back to the board to ask for additional appropriation for the CSA fund. And of course, there's a reduction in the transfer to our social services fund for about $25,000. But we also feel that that particular fund will be able to sustain operations because largely that is based on what the actual transfer has been needed to cover those services for a given fiscal year. This provides you with a detailed list of the additional spending cuts that were done to the various departments. I would not belabor by going through all of those. Again, as far as the outside agencies, I'm concerned, the bottom part of that screen does show the reductions in the contingency that I mentioned earlier. There are two major agency impacts. The transit service, we are recommending full elimination of that service. It was already recommended at $20,000. So once we take out the another $20,000, we would no longer be recommending the Wellsbury area transit service to be an agency that the county would fund. And the same holds true for the peanut soil and water conservation district. And that was based on the fact that we feel that there are some duplication of services in terms of what our Surrey extension service is able to provide for that area. As you recall, there were some other recommendations as far as the agencies, the one of them being a cut to our library. And as I explained in the earlier presentation, that no one is anti-librarian as far as the services they provide to the county. We look at all the agencies. I indicated that in their request, there was a recommendation for a salary increase. And we do know that because of the posture across the counties and the state is no one is providing salary increases. So it was hoping that the amount that was reduced from the library would certainly, that would take that in consideration. I do want to share that the initial amount that was recommended for the library, we did go back and was able to find some additional monies to not impact it as much. I believe the initial cut was about $30,000. And the cut right now is about $8,000 to the library. Okay. The next slide just rounds out all those reductions. As I indicated earlier, we needed about another $208,000. And as you can see here, based on all the reductions and by the time we added the additional revenue sources, was able to give your proposal that balances, that structurally balances the fiscal year 21 budget. And again, the total cuts were $852,000. The last slide, Board members and the public, just rounds out the next steps in our budget process. May 1st, which is tomorrow, if the board so chooses, we will release the advertisement to the paper for a public hearing that is to be scheduled on the 14th of May. And if all is well, to consider further deliberations and adaptive budget on the 21st of May. On this evening, I wanted to keep the presentation relatively short. At the last meeting, we went through it in quite detail. The budget information that was provided in your Board of Supervisors' agenda for the purposes of yourselves and the public does provide a lot more detail exactly of what went into the proposed budget. I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions that you have at this time. Ms. Swindell is on as well in the event that we need to delve into a little bit deeper regarding the proposal that has been presented to you this evening. That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman, unless there are some questions from yourself or from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for putting this together for us to consider on tonight. And at this time, I do open up the meeting for any board member that would have any discussion on this current presentation.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Yeah, I would like to express my appreciation to all involved in making these strict revisions that we had to make. And I think that in the end, we will all come out to feel proud of ourselves in that we were able to weather the storm. And I believe that we are. So hopefully, things will get better during the following fiscal year. But for right now, I think that we will survive, and we should feel proud of ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Any other comments from board members?
Chairman Elliott, this is Judy. Look, I would like to thank the staff and the board for all the work that we've put into this budget. And I know all of us hate to have to cut, you know, some things, but I don't see that it will be of a big hurt to anyone profoundly. And we want to just give God glory for the efforts and this that we've all had to put into what we're having to do today.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Mr. Home, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Drury or Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah. Chairman Elliott, this is Mike Drury. Again, I reiterate what Mr. Holmes said. And thanks to Ms. Rollins and staff for putting this together. I know it's been a lot of efforts and not pleasant. Ms. Rollins, I've just got a question. In fact, I've got several, but I'm going to email them to you later, I believe. But I was just curious in looking at two things. In the maintenance budget, there's, we, there's, in the maintenance budget, there's $140,000 taking out for repairs. Is that put in somewhere else in the budget? Are those repairs not going to be performed?
Yes, sir. Those, they, excellent question. That was actually transferred to the CIP. And the reason that being, Mr. Drury, and there's some additional explanation that is actually on the maintenance department page in the budget document that speaks to that operational change. But basically, the reason for that is because typically, over the course of the past many years, specific dollars have been allocated to different facilities in the county. For an example, in the maintenance budget, you see that maybe $20,000 was allocated to the office on youth building or $30,000 to Parks and Rec building and so forth. We decided to transfer that amount totality out to the CIP and allow the maintenance division administration to maybe strategically plan where those dollars need to go because there could be, you know, based on priority. So that's why the decision was made to move it from maintenance and put it in CIP. So that's why the decision was made to move it from Maintenance and put it in CIP so we can have a better handle on strategic planning exactly which facilities will require, you know, based on priority.
Thanks. And I assume that, and thank you for pointing that out. With that said, the school CIP in their budget presentation, they had repairs of a little over a million dollars. But yet in our CIP budget, it only shows a half a million. What's the difference?
Okay, if Dr. Sims is on, I will let her speak to the, the school's CIP. But I can tell you that in the, in the county's CIP, typically, we do budget because there is, we typically budget projects for the schools because we are the funding agency. So in the county's budget, the two projects that we have were those that felt that were the critical need in terms of some public safety issues that's associated with the high school electrical system and also the fire suppression system. And as you're aware, over the course of the years, what we typically have done is to use any potential carryover that was remaining at the end of the year to help fund those CIP projects. So that is the potential funding source for those two projects. In the school's budget, I'm not exactly sure where the other CIP items that you are referring to. So if Dr. Sims is on, she will be able to speak to that.
I don't know if she is. I probably will email you that. It won't go into the detail, but that was, yes, there's other, there's more listing in their CIP than we have in ours. And I don't, I was just curious as where the school was getting that from.
Okay, all right. Mr. Drury, I may add also, and thank you for the note, Ms. Windell, but they were probably listed in there as a request, but we did not fund them all. So that's exactly what happened. And it makes purposes, if it was in their CIP document itself, I thought you meant it was within their operating. But if it was in that CIP document, those are the ones that they requested, but we did not fund. But they're not.
Yes, there was, yeah, there were several, there were several more projects that was, in other words, so. And that's what I was going to suggest anyway. So thank you for that. And my last question is, under the Marina budget, it's got repairs of fifty thousand dollars and consultant forty-five thousand. What is that?
In the Marina budget, as far as the repairs, typically, you know, we, there are certain things that come up as relates, as it relates to the county's contractual obligation in terms of maintenance repairs items at the seafood restaurant. So this is pretty much just a placeholder for any potential items that may arise. As far as the other line item, you saying a consultant?
Contractual services.
Contract, okay. If that is for, yes, so that is for the individual or the contractor that we have to pay to be able to make the repairs. So that is the combination of what's going into the, into that budget.
So, so the Marina operations includes the restaurant?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thanks. That's all I have.
Yes, yeah, a contract with them calls for certain responsibilities of the county, and that includes some repairs and maintenance.
And thank you. I just saw the term Marina and didn't know whether it was just docks or whether it was everything.
Okay.
Thanks. And that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. You have any questions or concerns?
Mr. Elliott, thank you. I don't have any questions or concerns at this moment.
Thank you, sir. Again, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for your presentation. And at this time, as a board, we need to make a motion to receive this budget for advertisement and release for publication at a real estate tax rate of seventy-one cents. Could we get a motion on this matter at this time from the board for advertisement and the tax rate?
Mr. Elliott, Chair.
Uh, this is, Ms. Little, I think, yes, Mr. Drury?
Just a clarification. And is Ms. Daniel Powell on here, I believe? Since we're not raising any tax rates, I'm assuming we don't need to make a motion on advertisement for that? And this clarification.
Mr. Elliott, in addressing that, it will probably, for the public, may be the best thing to do, even though we don't have to. I don't see it hurting.
I, I, I spoke with Ms. Powell earlier today, and I did ask her this same question, and her response was the same as yours. Ms. Little, we do not necessarily have to, but it will not hurt us if we did advertise it.
So I would move that we would move forward to advertise the seventy-one cents.
And also, also the budget, the budget to release the budget as well?
And to release the budget.
We have a motion on, it's been properly moved in second that we would release our budget for advertisement at the seventy-one cent tax rate. Are there any other questions? If there are no other questions, Ms. Chapman, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call vote, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. The motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is our citizens' concerns. And I just want to let the citizens know that due to the fact that we are having our meetings virtually, we will not be reading the concerns during the meeting, but the meeting is being recorded. And when you email your concerns in, they are, they are forwarded to all of the board members. So we are reading your concerns as citizens just as we, if we were in our regular meeting, you would be addressing the board. And ninety-five percent of the time, the board does not give you a response there at that particular time. We take your concerns in consideration in our decision-making. So the same thing is being done now. We will not be reading your concerns out loud during the virtual meeting, but they are being forwarded to the board. Rest assured that we all are getting your concerns. So thank you for, for that. So following this meeting, you are more than welcome, and we encourage you to send your citizens' concerns by email, and they will definitely reach all of the board members. At this time, are there any other comments from the different board members at this time? And so that we won't step on each other, I will just call each member. And if you have a concern, please share it at this time. So first, I'll ask Mr. Drury, our vice chair, are there any comments from you at this time?
Thank you, but not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Ms. Little, any comments?
No comments or concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Little. Mr. Holmes?
No comments or concern at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Calhoun?
No comments or concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to comment once again, my appreciation to the staff for the work that they have done with this budget. I have been on several phone calls with staff, and I know the task that was presented to them with the reduction in revenue over the past year to get us to a place where we can be counter-level funded. So I want to thank them for the tasks at hand, hearing from the board and making this happen. Talking to the board members, I think that we are all pleased that we were able to maintain our current rate at this time. But we need to do, keep in mind that if indeed we are blessed as we expect, that we will be in the future year. The services that we want to provide and in the county, we will have to make some adjustments in our rates, but we will be more than transparent to our citizens to let you know everything that we are doing. But I am grateful at this time that we were able to maintain our current tax rate and get a budget put forth as well. So kudos once again to staff. At this time, before we adjourn, I'm going to ask our county administrator if there is any other information that she would like to pass on to us.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The only other information, bringing very brief that I would pass on is the budget, again, did represent a effort amongst all the staff. You know, after we had our last discussion, just to give you an idea, I had several department team members to contact me and submit their areas of where they felt that we could make some reductions, albeit it could have been a little bit of money. It still sort of kind of represented, again, the concerted effort that they were putting into making sure that we was able to get to the point that we need to make sure that we got a structured balance budget that did not reflect any tax rate increase. And I'm very appreciative of all the work that they put into getting their operational initiatives in. Again, if you have time to, late night reading, to please go through the budget document in detail because a lot of hard work went into it from departments to be able to prepare that information. So you all know exactly what is it planned for all of the team members in Suri to be able to to maintain operations as much as we can that are in the, that align with the strategic initiative that you as a board has set forth. So again, the budget document does provide operational initiatives as well as several highlights and accomplishments. One of the other things that I remember getting into a report is we have been asked many times as to what the county is doing to assist citizens and businesses in this time of COVID-19. And we provided some information last week as to some of the things. And we're hoping that collectively, you know, get those things together in one particular area to make sure we share it out. But again, just want to make you all aware that we are continuing to make sure that we're providing services to our vulnerable population. Ms. Valerie Pierce submitted some information today as the excellent things that they're doing. And we're trying to get some press coverage as to some of the things that we're doing. Department heads and other citizens in the community have been donating to, I guess we can call it our own Suri food pantry with the corporate extension and social services to be able to get resources early enough on our population. So I just wanted to let you all know that some conversation in terms of what some others may be doing. Like I said, in Suri, we are just extremely unique. And I can say at this time, even though we're going through this challenge, we are blessed still in terms of what some other localities are facing. You know, in terms of the dollars that they're going to be losing for meals taxes and some other big things that they have at this particular time. They have June fifth tax collections, for example, so they are concerned about not being able to provide some relief during that time. And Suri, we just have the one December fifth, so we have already received the majority of our taxes for this year. So again, just want to kind of share that a lot of collaboration has gone into this. I appreciate Dr. Sims, even though she's not on the call, in terms of what the school is doing and working together. I know there'll be many times right across the hall that we'll be able to communicate and make sure that we're working together, not just this year, but then ensuing years to come, as it relates to making sure that we are doing the best we can with the forces that are afforded to us. So again, just want to again, thank everyone for their cooperation and you, the board, for your support as well during this process.
Thanks again, Ms. Rollins. I'm just curious, is Mr. Phelps on, on call for our meeting on tonight?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Phelps, are you prepared or would you like to give us an update with the COVID-19 situation in Canada tonight before we adjourn?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman of the Board, board members, Ms. Rollins and citizens of Suri County. I wanted to change things up a little bit, not tell you to stay at home, not tell you to wear a mask when in public, and not tell you to wash your hands. Instead, what I wanted to do is I wanted to tell you how Suri County has been impacted by the COVID-19 cases. Virginia comprises two percent of the cumulative COVID cases in the United States. VDM Region Five, which Suri is part of, comprises twelve percent of the cumulative COVID-19 cases in Virginia. Suri County comprises only point nine percent of the cumulative COVID cases in the South Side section of Virginia. With that being said, citizens of Suri County venture out to other localities to buy groceries, to go to work, to go to the doctors, pharmacies, and to purchase other essential items they may need. When you go to these other localities, you have increased your chances of contracting the virus. For example, Alawite County comprises twenty-four percent of the cases in the South Side. Suffolk comprises forty percent of the cases in the South Side. James City County and Williamson comprise thirty-eight percent of the cases in the peninsula. Sussex and Prince George County comprise fifteen percent each in the Crater Health District. Suri County has been fortunate, so please continue to do your part to prevent the spread of the virus. Please visit the county website for our, for our updates. And should you have any questions, you can, you can email me at covid19@suricountyva.gov. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, for, yes, sir.
Oh, a sidebar for Mr. Phelps, how are things going in terms of the flooding status in the county?
Fortunately, different parts of the county got different amounts of rain. On our side, it looks like, on, on the western side, it looks like we've got between one and a half to two inches. I think on the Suri town side, they, they received a little bit more rain, but it's subsided fairly quickly. So we have had no complaints, no incidents regarding flooding or any down trees or anything, so we fared well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phelps, for your update. And you did not, you did not tell them to do so, and I appreciate what you said. But I want to remind everybody to keep on doing what we are doing because I believe that the efforts we have put in forth is really making a difference. Continue your social distancing, washing your hands and wearing your mask when you are out. Suri County is very fortunate. Our numbers are low. And it's because we have been following the guidelines that have been put forth. Let us continue to do that so we can keep our people safe and ourselves safe. If there is no other business that come to our attention at this time, the chair would entertain a motion for adjournment until our May seventh meeting at seven o'clock.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
I apologize. I do want to add one thing. And Ms. Powell, I'm not sure when that she's got back on the line, but I do want to advise the board that the changes that we're anticipating making to the meals taxes and also the planning fees do require an adjustment to the ordinance. So I think we just need to be mindful of the requirements in terms of the, you know, where they need to be advertised and that sort of thing. We can get more guidance from them, but I just want to kind of point that out in the bit that we need to make an adjustment to our schedule. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are here at your disposal at this time until we get this completed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Board members, do we have a motion for adjournment, May seventh at seven o'clock?
So will Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we will adjourn until May the seventh at seven o'clock. All in favor, let it be known by a roll call vote given by Mrs. Chapman.
Yes, sir. Roll call vote, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Ms. Chapman, take care of yourself. Get that voice right. Bless you all. Stay safe, Suri County, unless you want it on.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
All right.